Okay. We are here to have a special city council meeting for November the 27th. It is Monday, we hope. It's roughly 3:30. And, uh... So...
How many do we have? We have four.
We have four.
Yeah. Let's call to order and call the roll.
Mayor Troutman.
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher.
Here.
Gill.
Here.
Weed.
Here.
Meisner.
Here.
And you weren't late. Councilmember Extrem is excused. Councilmember Smith is here. And Councilmember Hockes is excused as well. We have a court.
Okay. Thank you. Then the issues that we're going to take up is storm water and storm water fees. Water rates, I'm sorry. Water rates and storm water fees. I got that right. Could I have a report from the city administrator?
They're going to turn this over to Andrew and our staff. Harry, Scott, and Bob to hopefully take up where we left off, which was in early November. We're talking about storm water fees. If we can get some direction, that'd be great. We could put this on our, on our agenda for December 4th and have these rates adopted by year end. If we can't in the next 30 minutes seem to have some direction or consensus, we'd probably suggest you just punt and we'll bring this matter back up under the new council in January. So, um, I think you'll either come to a consensus earlier or we'll just have to punt would be what we would propose. So on that note, let me just turn it over to Andrew. We've narrowed down the alternatives and the overall issues to be discussed, so I'll let him summarize that.
Thanks, Tony. And as anticipated, you know, we tried to put the alternatives and the additional information that was requested on the 8th within the memo. So we don't have an intent to have any sort of presentation or slides. It's really material was put into the memo itself. In terms of the alternatives, um, we've, with the focus of 2018, we've got two different type of capital funding plans over the 10-year period. So beyond 2018, these certainly, the differences, you know, expand or grow between the cash constraint or the status quo in terms of its ability, intended ability, to provide capital funding. But in terms of 2018, they yield the same results. And we've developed three different alternatives that recover the identified costs in 2018 and are tied to the, to the different rates, if you will. Under alternative one, we maintain the existing structure and we just do an across-the-board adjustment or increase. The billing packs are pretty straightforward on that one because we're not modifying the structure at all. We're just increasing the rate to generate roughly 9% more in revenue in 2018. Um, or annualized revenue, I should say. Alternative two is similar to what was presented previously, but we looked at the costs that we're trying to recover, say, from the flat charge. And in this case, we'd modified this from what was presented, um, where we were looking to recover the annual O&amp;M expenses with different flat fees for residential or non-residential. And then the difference between the funding scenarios is the impervious area charge for capital. And that would be the same for residential and commercial, depends on how much impervious area would influence your bill. But to contrast this with what was presented as alternative two a few weeks ago, that really just looked in the flat charge for the billing costs, it was roughly 50 cents a bill. And everything else was recovered from the impervious area charge. You'll see in the subsequent tables that there's a bit of a difference in terms of that flat charge is much higher. It's intended to recover the annual costs and then the impervious area charge is lower under, compared to the previous alternative two, as it's, it's just looking to recover in this case now, just capital. There's a third alternative that was requested that is also included in here, in this packet, that, that would look at all charges through a, a flat charge and it would make no difference between residential and commercial. It doesn't matter. Impervious area essentially is, is set aside for this assessment and it would be a system-wide flat charge. As the memo documents, Raff Teller's recommendation is, is certainly not alternative three. We, we'd suggest the city do not implement that. And the city attorney has, has opined a bit as well, as far as some of the constraints or some of the concerns with alternative three. And we can also see sort of customer billing packs, if you will. Water utility, I won't go into a lot of detail here. We, we, you know, this is consistent with what was presented previously with a couple exceptions in the case of alternative three. We're proposing that, in the attachments you're seeing here, that both the municipal and the golf customers essentially get absorbed within the commercial rates and commercial rate structure. So what is being proposed for their volume rate is the same as what is being proposed for the commercial customers at $2.20. This balances, you know, the, the mediacy and kind of the sharpness of implementing a rate, say, for the golf customer, as well as the city user as a standalone basis and recognizing that there's some irrigation that's happening, some peak usage. This would essentially put all commercial, municipal, sort of golf, along with other commercial enterprises, in the commercial rate structure. And we wouldn't be calling out, say, individually city accounts or calling out individually the one golf account. They would be incorporated with other businesses that are assessed, the commercial rate structure itself. We've got some customer billing packs and I know we had, you know, previously presented kind of typical customers, but we can also look at a table here if there's questions about individual usage levels. And for residential customer, kind of table five shows at each thousand gallon increments, what the bill would mean under alternative one, as well as alternative three compared to the existing bill today. We've incorporated some additional findings on pump charges and impact fees, but as intended with this, it is really you all to have kind of questions and discussions. You know, I wanted to set the stage a little bit with how the new alternatives compare to what was previously discussed and presented. Pumping charges and impact fees, while that was something that we had worked internally and talked with staff, that wasn't a topic that we had formally discussed in our last few presentations. So those two elements are a bit new, but we'd be happy to, you know, answer questions or discuss the recommendations on those additional or new elements that are incorporated in this memo as well.
I have, what were you trying to do on table four? Was you have residential customer user monthly bill impact compared winter, summer? That just because more usages in the winter? It doesn't, it wouldn't make any difference in rate. It's the same rate year-round?
It is. These are really different user profiles. So while on table five, we've got 4,000, the 10,000 and the 20,000 kind of users, the previous approach was to, you know, winter bill averaged around 4,000. So, you know, kind of focus in on, well, winter bill, the impact for alternative three is going to be a little different than alternative one. Or really a winter versus summer bill, because the summer bills is where we see a bigger impacts than alternative three. But that's really was the intent, is to just develop some average or common profiles for residential customers to compare and contrast the different alternatives. And you'll see the same information as well as additional kind of bills at different usage thresholds under table five.
Okay. And then I, just for the council, I did a, I took my bills and I had no idea what my wife was paying for water. Emphasis on wife. I'm just kidding. What's wrong with everybody? So, I took the proposed and, um, this particular bill was $174. That's the quarterly bill. And if we used alternative, one of the alternatives, it really only raised it a total of, uh, the, the highest raise using all the alternatives for a quarter was $35.92. About 10 bucks. And I'm sure, I'm sure it's in your figures, but then I got done looking at your figures, my eyes were glazed over and I was happy you did it, but I had no idea where I was going with it.
Okay.
I mean, seriously, I...
Just making average. Impact for customers.
So, that, that is the highest rate I took for, and that was alternative three. That's worst-case scenario for quarterly, but we're going to go to monthly billing. So it comes to about $10 and, uh, about $13 a month extra if my house stayed with the same watering program that we've had last summer. And then we took a winter bill, which was $95. And so it's, the bottom line is that in the worst-case scenario, it's 10 bucks a month to $12 a month extra, which seems to fit with the 9% that we're talking about overall raise. Is that right?
No. That, that's consistent. It also calls out, you know, you went to your bill and said, okay, this is what it's going to mean for me or for my household. And that's really what this table calls out, is that customers, you're going to have customers that have bills that vary throughout the year at different thresholds, or that, you know, may have some bills in the winter that are here and some bills in the summer here. So this is a very useful table because sometimes people will run with something. Well, they'll see an impact of 25% on, say, a 28,000 gallon per month usage threshold and assume that applies to all bills. And so, I mean, this, this also gives you all some additional information so that, you know, you can understand that by design, alternative three is gonna, it, it seeks to recover a little bit more and stabilize the revenue streams. So we can see in this table five that percentage-wise, it's going to be a higher impact for those customers that are at 3,000 gallons and below percentage-wise than the 9%. And then starting at about 4,000 gallons, it really is around the 9%. But we're proposing to redefine the tiers under alternative three. And so that's why we see some different sort of percentages all the way up until around 13,000 gallons. And then it starts to increase. So those users that are peaking, that are using a lot or more in the summer, their bill's going to be higher on a percentage basis because of what we're seeking to do with the tiers and the tier pricing. So when we get into tier three or usage that's above that 12,000 gallons, that's why we see that percentage tend to increase. And if we were to look at the number of customers on the system, then I know that it's billed quarterly for most residential customers, but in terms of monthly, they're really, the vast, vast majority of the users are at 20,000 gallons per month or below. So at 20,000, you start to see while those certainly will be users impacted, um, those are fewer and fewer. And in some cases, you know, users that are maybe peaking a lot or have a lot of irrigation requirements, or may not be as efficient with how they irrigate. And so their bill, they're getting billed more and they may choose to change their irrigation practices or they may choose that they like whatever the, you know, garden, the kind of flora and fauna, the large amount of bluegrass that's irrigated, and that's worth it for them and that's a value for them. So this is where, alternative three, under this table, we're going to see some changes because of the rate design, as well as increasing overall revenues. Taking this back, alternative one, it's pretty straightforward. Everyone's bill goes up 9%. But we're not, maybe not achieving some of the other goals that we are under alternative three, where we've got the class cost of service being achieved over a period of time and, you know, the, the impact of classes reflected in the rates and fees that they are assessed. I know golf and municipal are one user group that we, we've focused in and talked about, but there's certainly, you know, going back, there, there was some over-recovery from the multi-unit customers today and under-recovery from kind of commercial as a whole, especially when we pull in the municipal and the city customer, or the golf customers into that group.
And the intent that we're talking about is so that we don't end up with a street problem with our water system. We're trying to get ahead and stay ahead for repairs and future adjustments that will be needed, not just because we want a rate increase.
Correct.
Correct. That's what we're, why we're looking at it and why probably the street should have been looked at the same way.
Yeah. And I, you know, and Bob can certainly speak more specifically, the infrastructure, but in general, I think that the city's deferred some replacement and repairs. And so the capital plan really has us catching up a bit. And, you know, that idea of delaying and waiting, um, you know, those problems don't generally get better with time. And not dealing with them can often result in lines failing, kind of the emergency repairs, things in the middle of the night in the winter. And so it's a more proactive approach to getting a little bit out on the front end to catch up on repair and replacements and, you know, catch up on maybe some of the deferrals the city's, uh, uh, chosen to do in the, maybe in the past.
Would you concur, Bob?
Yeah. I think Andrew stated it pretty well. I mean, while we have been, uh, in my opinion, uh, putting money into the system, uh, the cost of this infrastructure is just so great, it's, we're, we're still lagging behind.
Okay. Counsel?
Well, first question, so what happens in year two? So we're, we're talking about 2018. What happens in 2019? And 2020? And the next 10 years after that?
We, we had put together a series of rate adjustments. And so I guess the answer to that question's a little different depending on the utility and the alternative. But I'll, I'll speak generally on the water utility side. The, we're anticipating and projecting the need for adjustments in 2019, 2020. And the next two years are around, you know, looking towards achieving that cost of service recovery and not trying to sort of adjust and get there all in 2018, but get there in 19 and 20 kind of phase our way towards that. So the 18 rate alternatives are, under alternative three is a step towards that. But it, it, either one, whether it's alternative one or alternative three on the water side, we're still identifying the need to increase user charges in 19 and 20. The rate structure is the mechanism for how we assess it from sort of different customers, if you will. And so it certainly influences the bills, but by definition, we're, you know, designing rates to generate the same amount of revenue. But generally, you know, if we were to look at the 10-year plan, we're anticipating future adjustments throughout the 10-year period. Now with the storm water, I wanted to just highlight one difference is under the status quo approach, where we take a step upwards for both our operating costs as well as some level of capital, the 2018 adjustment is the single adjustment. There isn't 2019 and thereafter adjustment planned, but the big difference between that and the other capital funding source for storm water that does have subsequent future adjustments is the amount of capital that can be funded. And it's a difference of roughly $8 million over that 10-year period. So under that status quo approach, where we're doing one adjustment in 18 and no subsequent adjustments, well, we're generating less funding for capital. And that's where kind of the difference plays out. But the other cash-constrained capital funding scenario for storm water does anticipate subsequent adjustments in, say, 19, 20 and throughout that 10-year period.
Harry, in real round numbers, what is the, um, the water utilities budget? And the next part of the question is, under alternatives one and three, how much will that increase next year?
Uh, let me give you the inside of my mind. Our budget is about $6 million, 6.5 million.
What did you ask for, water or storm water?
Water.
Water.
Yeah. And then alternative one will result in an increase in revenue of approximately, fill in the blank.
Did we calculate it there? We did. Give me a sec, I'll be able to...
Yeah. And the same question for alternative three.
About 9%.
Well, alternative one will be...
Alternative one is 9% straight.
9%. That's easy to calculate. So, we'll say 10, so it's a lot, 600K.
Right. Roughly about 550.
Alternative one. Nine times six is 54, yeah. 550. And while they're looking that up...
Every 1% would be about $57,000.
Okay. Yeah. It's a, I, I mean, it's just, alternative one is an across-the-board 9% increase, basically. Alternative three is kind of all over the map. And I was just curious what the, the net effect of all of those different rates and...
It's, it's the same. It's, it's the same overall utility budget. It just recovers it differently for different users.
Okay. So that would be 550 as well. Okay. What does that do for, 550? What does that do for our, uh, capital improvements needs?
Well, if I'm understanding correctly and looking at the 2018 budget, we're, we're projecting to, uh, if you're just looking at, uh, expenses versus revenue...
We are short $636,000. But it depends on how much capital, you know, we spend during the year. Sometimes when the actual comes out, our negative is a little less than what we, we are anticipating at the beginning of the year.
Well, I'm presuming...
But right now, the budget shows $636,000.
Okay. I'm, I'm presuming with the street work that we're doing right now, there's a lot of capital improvements that are required to stay ahead of...
Well, that's part of the issue. We're, we're diverting, we're diverting our normal capital from water to 2A streets. So there's, but there's other water mains that may even be in worse condition that we're not replacing.
Yeah.
So this would allow, because we figured out, we have enough to divert to 2A, but then everything else is getting ignored.
Yeah.
Think you can anticipate, as we go forward with our 2A projects of roughly $3.5 million a year, pay-as-you-go for street improvements, you can anticipate about $1 million is going to be required from the water fund to keep pace with the road improvements from now until the end of our 10-year sunset.
Hmm. Well, the, the majority of the street work's going to be accomplished in the first three years.
No. Just, you, you spiked it just for the first year. And from this point on, unless you decide differently, you'll be on a pay-as-you-go basis. We'll bill roads as the income comes in, which is roughly 3.5 million. And we need to complement that with about $1 million out of the water fund for line replacements.
And how that affects the 2A schedule is, we may do, we may end up having to do roads that may not be the priority.
All right.
If we don't have money to replace the water main in a road that's priority, we may have to go to a road that's less priority.
That doesn't have a water main under it.
Correct. Or a newer water main.
Okay. When that's, right. That was my next question that you answered.
Yeah. We're, you know, for example, we're doing two local roads this year that have new water mains under them, but they were far from the top of the priority list. They were in bad condition. They need it replaced, but they just weren't higher on the priority list because they had new water mains under them.
So if the streets that are under priority for 2018, how many of those have water mains that need to be replaced?
Um, one currently has the entire, the entire stretch of the street has new water main that's required. And then there's another one that's a priority street that we cut short because there's a section of it that needs a new water main that we can't afford. So we're, because we're using the current entire budget next year on that one street.
Okay. And I have a question. Tony, have you gotten ahold of the golf club?
Yes. The numbers they provided us, they do 30,000 rounds a year. 90% of their customers come from Colorado Springs in Denver. And they did also speak with Kevin Quinn and he was very frank. He said, you know, we really can't absorb any more costs because we're not generating much, not just the golf course, but development per se, not generating much revenue stream. So he has serious issues going forward. He's willing to exchange land in lieu of a fee increase. I think he'd also would accept maybe a phased-in approach, but what's being proposed now is if you adopted the one alternative, it'd be a $67,000 increase. Very price-sensitive to that. I think there's bigger issues, which I'll be talking to the council on this week, about the whole development. This is just an important piece of that development, but he's got broader concerns as far as working with other governmental entities to assist in first, particularly the first four or five years, get them off the ground and create the traction necessary to become a full-fledged and successful development. So this is just one small piece of that puzzle, but he clearly is, at this point in time, not advocating any significant increases. So that is the information from the golf course in a nutshell.
Does, that means, the, alternative one is just an across-the-board increase and that does not reclassify the golf course's water rates?
It doesn't.
Or the cities.
It does not. They stay the same.
For both city and golf course.
Yeah. I mean, is there some in-between ground that...
Yeah. We, you considered before where you could phase in of the alternative three, instead of doing it all in one year, that could be phased in over three years?
Yeah. I don't...
But even in three years, it's going to hurt that golf course.
But at least you're making bite-sized impacts and not, you know, both to the city and to the golf course, and we're in the same position.
The, I don't, the only thing I don't like about alternative one is the, the municipal and the golf course rates. But they, but I can't stomach, I mean, right? It's, it's difficult to swallow dumping that entire fee in one shot as well. So I mean...
For, for this municipal or for the golf club?
Both.
Both.
Yeah. So make the municipal...
Dennis, uh, under alternative one, the golf course impact will be approximate $11,000 a year.
Yeah.
Right. But that's, they're still paying the bargain rate.
Right.
And so, I mean, and that, there's, I'm suggesting that we maybe phase in the transition from bargain rate to commercial rate also a period of three years or four years or something.
We could, we could design it that way. If that was your direction, we could design it and bring you back that work for December 4th.
Mr....
Ms.... My concern, Dennis, though, is you brought up a valid point, that alternative three is only for 2018. So if we phase in 2018 over a three-year period, then we still have additional increases that we need to make on top of that over 19, 20, 21. I guess what concerns me, it seems like we should have a five-year plan of figures in terms of where we're going to be in five years, or at some point where these rates are somewhat stabilized. Is that...
They'll, they'll never be stabilized. One of the issues is it's important in going forward to have incremental increases annually and not go four or five years with no increase. Then you see the spiking effect, which we're undergoing right now.
That would be stabilized.
And we could show you that. Biggest difference between one is just, it's just across-the-board and it's an incremental impact on both the city and the golf course versus three, the big impact is not the rate, it's the change in the cost of service allocation for the city and the golf course, because we'd be swept into a commercial rate, which is fair and equitable, to be frank, but that could be phased in.
But alternative three has got a varying degrees of increases for 2018. Is there a cross-the-board increase then for 19? Yeah. That wouldn't again be the same variant percentages. It would have to be a straight incremental 8% or something. Is that not correct?
Um, what's, what's anticipated is that under alternative three, we are phasing towards the 2020 results. we are phasing towards, uh, the two thousand twenty results for all customers, while each and every year increasing roughly the amount that we're recovering by nine to ten percent. So to your point, the, you know, the two thousand eighteen is, is certainly one step. And if we were to look at the golf customer as its own, what's being proposed under alternative three where they be folded into commercial is already compromised. If they were to be a standalone customer paying their own cost of service, their rate would be the highest on the system, higher than what, um, ultimately by twenty twenty than what we're proposing for commercial, that kind of phases through things. So, you know, certainly we could div, you know, put the, for under alternative three, what the rate schedules look like in eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Under alternative one, uh, there would be an across-the-board adjustment each and every year of roughly nine percent. Um, and alternative three would recover those same amounts annually. It would just recover it differently from different types of customers. Um, and so two thousand eighteen is, is kind of one step towards class cost of service by two thousand twenty. It anticipates that there will be adjustments in nineteen and twenty, and those are certainly ones we've calculated already and developed. Um, and, and certainly could provide that information if helpful. The, the other thing that I wanted to highlight is going back to what the water utilities budget is, and just using the information on tables six and seven. Uh, the city customers, the difference in revenue between alternative one and th- and, and three for the city is roughly, I'll call it seventy thousand dollars, a little bit less than that, but round numbers call seventy thousand in terms of the impact. And this is the, the total or the difference, the change. Um, if we add the golf customer into the mix, that's another sixty thousand dollars that, uh, we're recovering under alternative three. So if we were to develop a kind of hybrid alternative one, um, we would need to allow for and adjust for the fact that the alternative one rates for the city and the municipal customers are producing a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than what, um, they are under, say, alternative three for those two users. And so we would look to, you know, kind of factor that in, if you will, and adjust for that. But on the service, alternative one is recovering a hundred and twenty thousand dollars or roughly. Um, that equates to, I want to make sure my math, it's like a, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars out of a six million dollar budget's roughly five percent. So we would need to account for that. Um, and as, as mentioned earlier, there's some other, uh, recovery items. If, if you look at the page two, the bullets, kind of what we're doing under alternative three. Um, we are proposing to align cost of service for not just municipal and city, um, but also commercial, residential, and the multi-unit set of customers. Um, and we've got some modifications to the rate structure. I would consider these to be relatively minor for commercial and commercial multi-unit, because there really aren't any customers, or very few that are in tier two. So there's some simplification by just going to a single rate that, um, there, there's, you know, complexity without any underlying rationale or real benefit. Uh, but that, that's a difference between alternative one, because alternative one, we maintain the two tiers. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that as well. It's a little bit more than just the municipal and golf, even though in our discussions, those customers have been highlighted because they would have the most significant impact under any alternative that seeks to recover the class cost of service.
Yeah, I, I guess, just going to Jim's comment. Uh, I think what I really, not that I'll be around to see it, but what I would really like to see is a multi-year plan. I mean, you can't increase the water rates nine percent every year indefinitely. It's after three years or five years or some number of years, that's going to do what Jim was talking about, it's going to stabilize. It, you're going to get to where you need to be, and then the rate increases are going to be two or three percent, not nine percent every year. And that's kind of what I feel like I need is, I need to know where that happens and how much it, the, what, what is the effective increase over that entire period of time?
Well, and to, to back that up, I mean, I see us looking at the small picture here of two thousand eighteen and me selling Mike, one of these guys on this proposal. And then next year at this time, we're back here again saying, we need another increase. And I guess I was not thinking clearly of recognizing that we're talking about increases over five or six years. And, and to come back to that with this schedule for alternative three, if I was at thirteen thousand gallons, am I looking at four point five percent each year over five years? Or only four point five percent the first year? But then where am I at in year two, three, and four, in terms of having, um, more of a macro plan that we could approve versus a si- I just think it's inappropriate to look at one year, knowing that one year's not the solution.
Well, you're, you're absolutely right. My observation in being here twenty years, though, is the next one doesn't happen.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, so you're, you're right, you have to look at the big picture, but you also only affect next year. You really do only affect next year. And, um, every time that we've done one of these and we've set up that plan, which we have and we could do, it just doesn't happen with the next city council.
I don't think that's true, I, I don't think we've ever had a plan for.
We've, we've increased.
For annual increases.
Oh, sure we have, absolutely. In fact, the golf course, because the last time we did it, they, we didn't want to hit them so bad, we came up with an incremental plan, didn't happen.
Which we talked about before.
Because it's not.
Council chose.
It never got the council, I never heard of these plans. Yeah.
But you got the blame for it, so that's good with me.
But we can provide that information.
Well, and I, I mean, I understand what you're saying, is if, if we went with, uh, with alternative one and tried to phase in the municipal and the golf coursing, it, it pulls out a hundred and twenty thousand or something over the next couple of years. But instead of going back and readjusting all the rates to compensate for that, you can stick, you could still stick with the nine percent and add another year onto the program if that's what it took.
But alternative one's not addressing some of your concerns relative to commercial, is it?
Yeah, because alternative three helps co- helps take into effect that for some commercial multi-unit, their water re- rates would actually be reduced, is that correct?
No, it's alternative.
Multi-unit.
Al- alternative three, I mean, if, it, when you get into the high usage, their increases is in the twenty percents range.
And that's, that's just residential, so commercial, yeah, this table, uh, five just applies to residential customers or those that are under the three-tiered rate today. Commercial has a different rate, and certainly we could develop a similar type of comparison that would show, you know, different users potentially being affected a little bit differently.
What, what's the average residential usage?
Um, when we calculate on an average annual basis, it's, it's around ten thousand gallons a month.
Do you know how many customers we have, uh, above ten thousand?
Not, not at my fingertips, I mean, it's, that's certainly information we've developed and have available. And we, we certainly could provide the number of users, uh, at above ten thousand. You know, it's roughly half at that level, but when you start getting into the twenty thousand above, that's where you, you kind of see the, uh, numbers dwindle quite a bit. That there's certainly users in twenty thousand above, but, uh, they're much less than, say, the monthly bills we have between, say, five thousand and twelve thousand gallons.
It's a, so I'm trying to figure out, so I don't even know how alternative one or three overall affects commercial customers.
Because you gotta, well, it doesn't, but you gotta, I think you gotta go to table, gotta go to table three, correct? To see the impact of the proposed changes? Relative, it actually, commercial is actually getting reduced, am I not correct?
It, it is, and that's, that's the volume rates, so that, that, that'll give you an idea that, you know, commercial tier one's going from two sixty-one to two twenty, and that is being reduced. But they also pay what's in table two a monthly service charge.
Would go from two thirty-nine to two twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, I was looking the wrong table, yep, or the wrong column, two thirty-nine to two twenty. Uh, but their monthly service charge would go up, or what's in table two. Um, so how that math works out depends on how much volume that particular user is using. And that's where you're going to get some variation depending on, uh, monthly use.
But it's just that there is no table for gallon, for usage for commercials.
Right, the, the, the diversity is very wide, so it's very difficult to come up with a comprehensive table. We either kind of choose usage profiles and go with that and show how it impacts different usage profiles. Um, or we would, you know, essentially look at different meter sizes and different usage profiles, or developing what we've done on table five, but doing it for three-quarter inch meters, inch-and-a-half meters, and maybe two-inch meters if, uh, we've got enough two-inch meters on the system. So we'd essentially have a table five for every meter size. And, um, we, you know, that would give some, uh, additional information about the sort of range of bills or, uh, impacts.
Do we have a, do we have a count of, of, uh, meter sizes by commercial? I mean, roughly, roughly, what is the most predominant meter size for commercials?
Uh, three-quarter, yeah, three-quarter inch is still going to be the.
Approximately, how many of those are three-quarter, do you know?
Uh, no, without going back to some information, I'd be speaking on a turn.
But it, it just generally, commercial's much, much more difficult, just by definition. I mean, with residential, there's a profile of profiles, there's more of an average user, an average home size, average. Um, so it, it, the range of possibilities is much more narrow with commercial, you've got a much more diverse customer base. So just by definition, much more difficult to give you guys a snapshot of what the bills look like without either oversimplifying and not to do justice, or, um, being so comprehensive that we lose the kind of message and, uh, the amount of data.
Didn't you indicate that we only had a few commercials that were over the three million?
Yeah, there, there, it's really just the Department of Corrections in the city are the only users that go over three million gallons per month.
Do we know what the average commercial usage is, non, non, uh, municipal? I mean, I'm trying to figure out what an average commercial bill would be.
Sure.
So.
I don't have that at my fingertips, so that's something easy.
Tough, because, you know, you've, you've got an ice, an ice cream shop and a car wash.
Yeah.
And they're both commercial users, and, you know.
If you look at table five, uh, it clearly illustrates the vast majority of our customers are residential, they would benefit most by alternative three. Their rate increase would, on average, go up three point six percent, assuming ten thousand gallons a month. Versus under alternative one, it'd be going up eight point nine percent. So roughly a little over a dollar per month versus almost three dollars per month. So if you're looking at, you know, minimizing the impact on the vast majority of residents, alternative three is probably the superior route. It impacts the larger volume users, and in particular, the city and the golf course.
I don't, man, I don't get table three, or table four.
Five.
Well, yeah, no, I'm just looking at table four. If the winter change is nine percent and the summer change is eighteen percent, how's the annual change three percent?
It, it's for that user, so I, I, I would, um, it, it just is snapshot. So for a user using ten thousand gallons, their bill would only go up four percent under alternative three. Um, but it's not, we're not trying to have an algebraic equation be solved by that. Um, and it, it just, you know, gives you an idea. Table five is a little more comprehensive, because it sort of fills in the blanks and you can see a little bit more of kind of the trends and, and what the drivers may be, um, around the impacts, if you will.
Jim, uh, that can help, uh, about fifty-six percent of the total consumptions applies to the commercial, and about thirty-seven percent applies to the residential, if that helps. So out of total consumptions, what we bill, fifty percent of that, fifty-six percent is a commercial consumption.
What was it, residential?
Thirty-seven percent.
That's based on volume, but if you look at pure customer base, the residential base is much larger.
Well, the residential is ten times the commercial. There's.
We only have approximately twelve hundred, a little less than twelve hundred non-residential accounts, as opposed to.
Six thousand or so.
Six thousand.
So when you look at the monthly service charge, each one of those individual residential customers is paying ten dollars uh, outside of where the usage comes in. And the commercial customers, you know, even those with larger meter sizes, you know, there are just fewer of them. Um, and so the majority, over fifty percent of our revenue comes from residential customers. And, uh, certainly much more than that in, in terms of the number of accounts or individual users, as is articulated by the number of accounts or bills.
Somehow it doesn't add up, because I, like, when we were talking about stormwater figures, uh, we, the numbers I got from Harry were there was ten times as many, uh, commercial customers as there, I mean, residential customer property, there's ten times as many residential properties as there are commercial properties. So how can there only be five times as many residential customers?
Keep, keep in mind that, uh, outside-city service is provided by the water utility, where that is not the case for stormwater. So we do have residential and commercial outside-city customers that maybe, you know, I, I won't say that that exactly solves the comparison you're raising, but that, that's a big part of it, that you're comparing apples and oranges.
Yeah, but half of the city's water customers are outside the city limits.
There's a lot of them.
Not half of them. I mean, the majority of them, I think Lincoln Park is really the only significant lump of, that's okay. Yeah, not, but that's the long raise from fifty. Anyhow, your question.
One of Dennis's concerns that I've heard, and I kind of concur with it, was that the multi-unit is billed as a commercial. Um, and one concern is those particular users are, you know, often that's a past expense onto those renters. Um, and this increase could dramatically increase, you know, those, those water bills as well. What does it take to reclassify those as residential, so that we can look at it that way?
There would be, I mean, it certainly would affect the analysis right now, as I understand it, the multi-unit, it's labeled a commercial multi-unit, but it's, it includes multifamily residential, uh, multi-tenant commercial. So think of a strip mall where there's one structure and one meter, and individual tenants, where the owner gets the bill, they're considered multi-unit, uh, for purposes of the structure.
Setting versus a residential setting.
This is commercial multi-u- you're right, commercial setting, but multi-tenant, residential setting, multi-tenant. And the third that is included is hotel motels. So if we were to want to look at just those multifamily residential, we would need to essentially identify those accounts and pull them out. And whether we would maintain a kind of commercial multi-tenant slash hotel class or, you know, kind of disband the class as a whole and put those, say, in a commercial bucket, then that could, I, I don't know how that impacts the recommendations and findings. Um, but it would take us essentially identifying of those that are classified as commercial multi-unit now. You know, is it multifamily residential, which of the three sort of categories, um, applies to them? And, uh, pulling them out separately from the other users.
It seems to me that we're, are we trying to get to a number like six hundred thousand dollars a year, or is that even a fair question to ask?
Not necessarily.
Was that ever?
No. I think what we're planning to do is, uh, whether we can, uh, you know, afford to maintain the capital programs for next ten years.
And.
And that is about two million a year. That's what we're trying to get.
How would we know then that if?
How would we know then that any of these that we do wouldn't meet, to even come close to that?
We have to accumulate this funding over the years and when the, when the, the actually required to do the capital, we have enough fundings. It's a put in the reserve.
So we're anticipating about a million dollars out of the two going to 2A, another million going to the rest of the water utility aged infrastructure. So keep pace on both fronts. That's an average.
But we're already making money, so aren't, shouldn't look at it as how much more do we have to make for, to do these capital investments?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's...
What's the incremental amount we need to address our capital needs?
And either one of these alternatives, Alternative One or Three, gets us there?
Yes. But it doesn't get us there in one adjustment.
But it's one year. So if you were to say, let's pick one, then for a period of time, maybe it would be 8.9 and 6.5 and 5.5 because your percentage wise, the bigger the bill goes, you're making the money, but as the bigger, you can reduce your percentage to get to the same number. So if you decided, the council could decide to go with a three or four year program, starting at 8.9, pick a number. Then next year it would be 6.2 and go on. So we're, we're getting to the same amount of money, but we're not...
Increase is smaller.
Yeah, because if you just keep going at 9.99, eventually you're going to be to 36 percent increase. Maybe that's required. I don't know.
That's what the kind of, we started out looking at this 10-year plan and looking at not just sort of a single budget year, but there's an inflationary impact to the operating budget. So factoring that in, without spending a dime on capital, there's cost increases that are prudent and are anticipated. Even those that are outside of the city's control, like the cost of power and chemicals. Um, and then we worked with Bob on the water side to say, okay, what's the capital program that you need to be able to meet the service level requirements, maintain the system, have sufficient capacity for growth? So Bob started out with, well, boy, if, if resources were unlimited, here's a capital plan. And then we developed a handful of capital plans, one of which was what we termed as the status quo from a funding standpoint. And this would be the bare minimum to really maintain the system without really getting out in front of sort of the capital replacements that may be necessary, but just keep it, you know, essentially up and running. Um, and so we looked at a 10-year period, what that would mean for additional revenue increases. Um, so that gives us something, it, it kind of high level answer, but the difficulty with translating that to rates on an annual basis is that if we were to translate, say, those three capital funding programs to two rate alternatives, to, you know, even just keeping it in the three-year period, the three-year rate phases that go through 2020, the number of options, alternatives is overwhelming. So when we were first here presenting, we were looking for a little bit of direction just to try and narrow the number of capital funding scenarios. And we have. We went from four to two. Um, but depending on, you know, if the council would like to adopt a three-year rate structure and three-year schedule, have an ordinance that says we're adopting 18, 19, and 20, that can be certainly something that, you know, we've developed that, we've presented that with staff, we've talked, we've got that. We even sort of put that on the table. And that gives a bit of a balance, that it gives the community some certainty that this isn't going to be an annual question. It also gives utility staff some certainty too, that funding, you know, setting aside, yep, its usage, it may vary a bit depending on how much water people use. But it gives utility staff certainty that, um, they've got a two- and three-year kind of amount to work with and execute multi-year capital projects, a lot of which span more than one fiscal year. Um, so that's one option. And another option is to just kind of focus in on 18, understanding that it's a first step. That if we just take the 18 step, we're not going to be able to build all the capital over the 10-year period that's been identified. That there are future adjustments that are anticipated and those vary depending on how much capital we're trying to fund and build. Um, so hopefully that provides at least some clarity in terms of the options and the moving pieces is...
So you could also mix and match between a, um, a fixed fee, which is the meter fee, and percentages, because the meter fee you're always going to get. Let's say that the, like, in my household, if we decide, I decided, my wife actually, and will decide that that's too much water and decides to cut back, then that, you'd be getting less money. But if it was a fixed meter fee, you'd be getting the same amount of money. So maybe it could be a mix of both because I see on my building is $16.48, the meter charge is $16.48. And we lose less than 1,000 gallons. I don't know why we lose that little water, but we do. And over here it's 16, the meter charge on my house is $29.60. Is there a possibility we could look at a mix of meter charge, which would be, we know we're getting that every month? And if mine, if my, our household decides, we're going to cut back and go to dry or whatever that's called, get rid of all our grass, we're going to substantially cut back the amount of money the city's going to get because we're going to use more, less, less water. And then you're going to come back and penalize me because I'm using less water by raising my rates to get to where you should have been.
I, that, that has a, you know, there's potential that, that, oh, double-edged sword of conservation exists where the, you know, the people cut back and then, well, we've got some fixed costs, so we turned around and need to adjust our rates higher to offset that. Um, so I mean, this, this kind of fixed volume mix is going to be a little different. And while you guys may choose to cut back, there are other users that won't blink and won't change at all. There's other users that may in the short term cut back and then forget about it and go back to the practices they had before. So I mean, you know, there, there's a bit of psychology and while we may have a bit of all within the community, um, there, there's some level of kind of averaging that some may cut back, some may not, some may increase usage. And so the net effect on the system may not necessarily be just everybody cuts back. But, uh, you know, it's a, it's certainly a mix and match between what we want to cover from the fixed costs. The other kind of trade-off, the more we recover from our fixed charges, the more burden we put on terms of cost recovery on the lower users. So those, you know, it's, it's, then that creates a, a sense of inequity there and that I'm using less, but I'm paying a big fixed bill. And so those, you know, customers that are on a fixed income or limited income hits them a little bit harder. So I mean, that, you know, it's one of those where there's no perfect rate structure. There's going to be a trade-off and that solves a variable revenue issue by putting more in the fixed charge. But it also can create affordability issues as well as kind of impact or payment issues because the customer, you know, today is paying monthly service charge and volume charge. If we look to increase that fixed charge, then their percentage impact's going to be larger under those alternatives. So I, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, it's, it's a lot of moving pieces and it's difficult to zero in on a, a typical customer without just kind of going with an average customer. Because there really is, you know, some averaging, but there's also, uh, you know, a typical customer is going to use, in my household, we use more in the summertime than we do in the wintertime. So, you know, it's not even just a typical monthly value. It varies throughout the year. So I guess, and, and Harry reminded me, you know, I'm looking at the clock. Uh, we focused a lot on water, but we've got some limited time and, and I wanted to, you know, I, um, ask if there's some questions on the stormwater side as well, some discussion there.
Andrew has other commitment and he has to leave shortly. So I was wondering if you want to start asking some question about the stormwater because that is more important than water. And then we can debate at the end, uh, what suggestions you have.
I would like to move the stormwater off until next year and not talk about it at all.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
That's...
And I would agree with that because we've got another entity that may come play with us, you know, with the county. Um, and that's going to change everything drastically. And that's a point I was going to bring up. We need to find out who all the players are and what they can bring to the table before we decide what we're going to charge the customers.
That's true, but it wouldn't affect 2018 and we have to have a rate increase for stormwater in 2018. It's underwater.
Right, I know. It's, the enterprise is upside down, yeah.
Yeah. So we have no choice. We have to have a rate increase. And even if we have a partner, that partnership at the earliest would not come into fruition until 2019.
And there's a lot of variables on that. Whereas this number of stormwater infrastructure that is imperative to get done, needs to get done.
And it's been a problem for 50, 60 years. Okay? So I don't think another six months to come up with a decision is really going to be the wrong one to make sure that we have the right people involved.
Well, we would have no money for any capital improvements next year. And clearly it's one of the greatest needs in the community is to improve the capital infrastructure for stormwater. It'd be another missed opportunity, another whole year. There's, be zero investment.
I think we have some entities that would be very upset if we did not make some capital improvements in 2018. That could include possible litigation.
Yeah, I'm aware.
Well, because the fact that that's always been threatened, maybe we should have an executive session about it. It's already been threatened.
We can arrange that.
So...
I, I kind of agree with the comment that, um...
You can call me Jerry.
No, I'm not going to call you. I was going to say that, that there, there, I know there's an urgency to this, but I don't know how much of an urgency there is. But there are some comments I would like to make. It's, um, the, the Alternative Three was, was kind of, I guess, a stab at, uh, addressing my concern about, uh, the inequity of rates between, um, consumers and commercial users. But, uh, the, but that's not what I had in mind. It's, uh, I, if you look at, uh, any of these alternatives currently and in any of the Alternative One or Two, the, uh, the commercial customers, on average, are paying five times as much as the residential customers. That's, uh, and I was, my goal was to try and figure out a way to make it less than five times as much. Share some of that burden with, um, the, the residential customers. And the, if you look at the alternatives, one and two, the, the increases for commercial versus residential are five to one. That's, the, the commercial increases are five times as much as the residential increases. So it's absolutely maintaining the status quo, which was not what my intent was. It was to try and improve the situation. And I think there's got to be, because like I said, my comment back then, it's still the same. The, the single largest contribution in stormwater is streets. And the commercial businesses are bearing the burden of the streets. And that's the residents that use the streets, not the businesses. Businesses don't drive on streets. Custom residents do.
Businesses use streets too, and it's not just streets. It's a bigger picture than that.
It's what?
It's a bigger picture than that, and businesses do use streets.
A business, no, residents use streets to get to businesses, but you don't see...
Businesses, your patrons use the streets to get to you, and you als, and businesses also use streets to have deliveries of their goods.
Yeah, okay. So 1 percent of street uses businesses.
And they have the most impervious surface.
Yeah. It's, uh, and, um, well, that's just my comment. The other comment is, uh, if you get to the very end, there's this thing about stormwater fees, uh, or no, uh, impact fees. And, um, the current impact fee is 750 per acre. And there was a question about going to, uh, an impervious surface fee. If that's the way you decided to go, uh, my very, very strong recommendation would be to exclude all paving from that calculation. So if a business, well, I mean, it's, uh, because they pay for that monthly forever. It's, uh, and they're required to do it. And, uh, and if you, if you look at a, a place like, uh, if you have an acre of paving, that's 40,000 square feet. And that turns out, that gets, you're, you're talking about a almost $10,000 impact that you're putting on a new business if it's a big, if they're going to have an acre of pavement. That then they pay stormwater fees on every month as well at five times the residential rate.
Can I ask a question? What, what's, refresh my memory in terms of what's the logic between the different rates for commercial and non-commercial or residential and commercial?
There isn't a difference.
Direct related to the average impervious area, if you know...
Yeah, when Dennis is referring to difference in rate, there's not a difference in rate.
No, it could, the...
There's a difference in total, uh, based on their usage, just like water. So if, if you use more water, you pay more. So there's not a difference in tiers based on commercial versus residential.
We're all paying the same.
Yeah. For example, council member, if you look at the average impervious area for residents is 3,688. If you multiply that by five, which is how happens to be almost exactly the average of a commercial impervious area, which is 19,000 square feet, so there's a direct correlation. So residential areas as it, as it relates to the fees is one-fifth the cost because they're one-fifth the impervious average area. So that's the relationship.
But they're all paying the same rate.
Yeah, but Walmart hasn't...
Well, but then if you look at Alternative Two, uh, the, the flat rate is four times, five times, six times. Four.
Right, and that's prorated on their total of impervious surface in the system. That's how that number is calculated.
But they're, they're already paying for that by the amount of impervious surface they have.
Well, that's why the flat rate doesn't make sense at all.
The flat rate, what it does is it averages the class. It, it averages all other sort of users at that $44 level. And so, uh, a business that's, say, 2,000 impervious area today, their bill's going to go up quite a bit relative to what it is today. And those that are above average in terms of their impervious area will likely see their bill coming down or increasing much less. And so that, that's, you know, Alternative Two takes the operating costs and instead of recovering that impervious area base as it is today, it averages residential and puts them all in a pot and says, okay, on average, that's eight bucks a month from everybody. Recognizing that the impervious area for residential is much, much less than a commercial and commercial is a similar thing. But within that, the average commercial, uh, user, or all other really, um, is 19,000 square feet impervious. So anybody that's less than 19,000 under Alternative Two is going to see percentage wise, a larger bill increase than those that are above 19,000.
Yeah. Every step you go from impervious surface is a step away from equity. The equity between the bills. Every, every step you go away from impervious surface. That's why impervious surface is done the way it is. It's the most equitable and fair way to do it. Now, if paving for businesses is an issue, that's another discussion under zoning regulation.
Yeah, well, I'll go back.
Because one thing that impervious surface does is it also incentivizes less impervious surface, which is the intent. The intent is to reduce the amount of runoff.
Okay, but I, I will still go back to my original point. What is the total amount of impervious paved roads in Canyon City percentage wise compared to impervious surface on private property?
I have no idea, but the question would be, what difference does it make?
That's where the impact is coming from.
Because the nexus, the nexus is, well, you're right, but the nexus is impervious surface. We know that impervious surface increases runoff, okay?
Bingo, that's my point.
Okay, so you can't charge the streets. There's no one there to write a check.
Tony will.
There's no one there to write a check for the streets. They, they belong to everybody, businesses and residents alike.
Yeah, so don't you think everybody should pay for them?
That's the point of using impervious surface. So you go to the next equitable way of dispersing that cost amongst everybody, which is what their impact, their individual impact to, to the system is, which is, which is the streets, which for the majority of our town is the storm system. We don't have storm drains. The streets are, carry the stormwater. It's the system that we're paying for. It's the water pipeline.
I hear you.
I hear ya. Who do you hear?
I get it.
Well, I get that the streets are the...
But if we're not gonna talk about it until 2018, then we need to probably go back to water.
So here are my... Here, there's two things that I'm hearing. Which of these would address the fixed rate? Because, you know, there's a point brought up that if you raise it too much, people will start conserving, and then you're... You know, which one addresses the fixed rate?
Are you talking water?
Yeah, water. Back to water.
Water doesn't have fixed rate.
Does either one of them address the fixed rate?
We... They've got slightly different monthly service charges, so you see under table two. The alternative three adjusts the monthly service charges for 5 eighths and 3 quarter-inch meters, a little bit higher than it does under alternative one. And in total, we increase the stability. We generate roughly 4% more of our revenue from the fixed charge under alternative three.
So they're both about the same, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's a little more stable, but there's not a big difference.
Okay. And again, I don't know if we want to go back and revisit that, but it does make sense to increase that fixed rate a little more so that we have a more stable source of revenue. I don't know if that we want to send it back, but otherwise, I would go with the option that's equitable to all. I keep on hearing that. And to me, it seems like that's number three.
I agree, number three, but I would like to see city going ahead and paying their fair commercial rate as that our streets need to have, the right streets need to be fixed on the right schedule. And I think we can make those budget adjustments for 2018. However, I do think we need to have more discussions about the golf course. I don't know if today we can make that decision. Sounds like there's a lot more to discuss as they have a huge asset to a community and for potential development. And for retirement communities, a lot of people move here for retirement, they want and expect a golf course.
No, there's no question, the golf course is the centerpiece for that potential development. If it goes, it's a dust bowl out there.
There's nothing to drive new development.
Tony, do we have the... We don't have the option of implementing a five-year plan for rates, do we?
Not really, because it's subject to annual appropriations. We could certainly have a plan, and you know, I think that having looked at the past, I think Bob and Adam are correct. And it's not unusual, the city has had multi-year plans, which they haven't stuck to. That will be the key, is if we develop something like that, a five-year rate schedule, that we actually stick to it. Otherwise, we're gonna be back in the same boat with these big spikes.
And it was two years ago that we had this last increase, correct, Bob? And it was again, I think it was 3%. It was 3%.
On water.
On water. So I don't see any other way around it. We need to make up for that, and as you were saying, we kind of need to keep this going.
Yeah, keep it in command.
Since it does require an annual review, though, I think we should just get our head around it. Two years of this kind of catching up, because there's both inflation and we've been running a deficit for a couple of years.
This rate would require an ordinance?
Yes.
But we... My question is, is by ordinance, we don't have the option of implementing over three years?
No, you couldn't hold a future council to that. It'd be like trying to adopt a five-year budget. I mean, in theory, I guess, do it, but in reality, no council would have to honor it.
You can do it, but it's subject to annual appropriations.
Right.
The future council would have to prove it.
But if you did it, it would be in writing and a plan.
We could reflect, we have a five-year financial plan, we could reflect it in that and demonstrate that if you deviate off this plan, what the consequences are, and maybe that will help in the future.
You can do a resolution for two years and then do it in a five-year plan.
Yeah.
My only concern is, as I've already mentioned, that we all understand this, but John Doe out there looks at this as being an increase for 2018. And then 2019 rolls around, and we're talking about it again, and I just want to try to communicate as much as we can, this is not a 2018 problem. It's a five-year problem.
But the customer, interestingly enough, with the exception of cities, you look at, you know, cable television, electricity, gas, they have routine rate increases. No one goes crazy because they're nominal incremental increases almost annually. People are used to that. But then the city comes along and doesn't do anything for years, and then you get these big spikes. That's what disturbs people.
I don't have a problem with 2018 being at these rates and then us being in those same annual adjustments. But that's, as I'm understanding, that's not what we're talking about. We need a three- or four-year plan to get stabilized so that we can do 1 and 1/2, 2% or whatever.
And we can provide you that at the same time as when you adopt the rates. At least you're providing disclosure to the public that, hey, we're adopting this rate for this year, but this is what we're forecasting in out years, to be honest.
I would need that so that I could...
Transparent.
I would personally want that.
We can provide you that.
Andrew here has some comment on that.
Yeah, I mean, the point on appropriations is valid. You don't want to tie the hands of future councils. But the example that the meeting I'm heading to after this is City of Pueblo, and what they do on the wastewater side is we've got a five-year rolling future forecast of rates that council essentially updates every year or two. And so they're adopting a five-year rate schedule. Tonight, we're presenting the, essentially, the next five years. Well, two years ago, they had adopted a five-year rate schedule. So the rates they're going into effect in 2018 had already been previously adopted. And it provides some certainty. It provides kind of a little more transparency, this is where we're expecting things to go. But there's nothing that prevents council from putting forward an ordinance that modifies the, you know, 18, 19, 20 rates. And there also can be action taken to, you know, rescind what was previously adopted. The benefit is that it avoids these difficult discussions on a yearly kind of basis, and it sort of sets a trajectory. So it doesn't prevent a future council from saying, we appreciate that, you know, the previous council adopted this three-year rate, but, you know, we're looking at 2019, you know, this flash forward a year, and modifying the adopted rates that were going to effect in 19. But it does provide some certainty and sort of trajectory. And so absent those, you know, discussions or ordinances or kind of how you want to frame it, where maybe annually it gets sort of voted on or, you know, updated, but again, you know, the idea being that it gives some certainty and avoids kind of, you know, annual conversations. Often, when we do a study like this, it's very present in people's minds, and I think this is kind of what happened in '08. After the first year, kind of the memory of council, as well as the memory of the citizens, kind of goes away. And we may have attempted to sort of phase things, but those subsequent adjustments just didn't get implemented. So it, you know, there may have been a multi-year plan, there likely was, and then the staff is kind of saying, okay, well, now we're back down to this level. This is what we can, you know, accomplish with those funds. And that may not necessarily be the proactive capital or the type of capital replacement the system really needs. It's sort of compromised position. And then, you know, may decide to do a study like this, and every few years, you go with a big adjustment. But in my experience, having a little bit more of a two-to-five-year plan, and whether it's reviewing it annually or every other year, and evaluating, it's a pretty effective way of balancing the need for kind of some level of transparency beyond next year, but also providing sufficient reviews and, you know, is this still accomplishing what we set out to achieve? And at some point, you know, do the rates start to stabilize once we catch up to the capital funding the system needs?
Could we go ahead and do a five-year, look what a five-year schedule plan would be? And then also have an ordinance that would stipulate in there that that is brought back to council at a certain date during the year? Because the points were all taken, it was, good intentions were there, but everybody forgot about it after that. If it has to come back in the month of November, let's say, pick a date, then it would come back for that, and if not, it would, you know, we would continue on. Budget time, basically, you're right.
And then we're not having to deal with this in the 11th hour, trying to...
Right. And so it's a five-year plan. It can be, everybody can read it during that period of time, new council can see it, but it has to come back at budget time.
And would this rate plan then be, you know, at 9% for this year as we're kind of looking at it? And then can we expect it to be a little less next year? Or are you thinking that you need to see 9% for two years?
It's 9% for at least three years, is what we've identified. And after that, I don't... I want to be careful that I don't quote something. There's some differences that start to materialize between the capital funding plans after that three-year period. And so within that five-year period, I think we could see some differences between, you know, a status quo plan or one that builds a bit more capital that, you know, we've defined as the constraint plan, if you will.
But we could go ahead and get that five-year plan in front of us soon.
Yes.
Tomorrow at noon. Too soon.
Maybe 5:00.
Discuss on December the 4th.
Does everybody feel comfortable with that? That's the direction.
If we took, from my viewpoint, if you took plan number three, at least relative to water, but then put that in a five-year plan, and I'm not saying that increase, but put us a five-year plan based upon the alternative three concept, I think I could support that.
Okay.
I wouldn't like it, but at least I could support it and be honest with everybody. This is what we got.
Would you want to include in there phasing in a golf course municipal rate, or do you just want to...
Well, I think we still have to have a conversation about what type of phasing in it's gonna, we're gonna need.
I would like to see that phased in.
We recommend it over three years for both the city and the golf course. It guesses where we want to go, but in bite-sized pieces.
Okay, so that's our plan then, right?
Okay, yeah.
Okay?
Bring that back on the 4th, and we'll hunt on the storm.
I want to hear more before we adopt this, though, from the golf course and their future plans and things like that.
We can chat tomorrow. We can get Kevin on the phone, and he'll be very clear. He doesn't want any increase. In fact, he has a broader issue than just the golf course. But we'll talk about that tomorrow.
And I don't feel comfortable doing any increase until we know more what we're wrapping ourselves around.
Well...
So, well, I mean, I know we're gonna have to have some sort of increase. I know that, and I recognize we're gonna have some.
Well, under this proposal, it'll be right around $10,000. Could he live with that? Yeah, I mean, that's 30 cents per golfer.
Was it 10,000 or 60,000 dollars?
I think he could live with that, but he's got longer-term issues that I think we'll need to discuss tomorrow and with the rest of the council this week that are more pronounced than the golf course.
Okay, so we're gonna come up with a five-year plan.
On water.
On water only.
Water, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But we can't commit to sewer, I mean, to stormwater, is that correct?
Yeah. Bring you that back in January.
And with a respect to stormwater, I'm gonna make a comment that is guaranteed to be groan-inducing, but I'm gonna do it anyhow. It's just given the local history. But I honestly think that there's an alternative that we're not looking at as far as stormwater, and that would be property tax. And which I think is a much more equitable way of distributing it. And I mean, it's a... And then look at how much money is being raised by relatively small increases in the school mill levy. It's, you're talking 20 or 30 million dollars. And now granted, it goes beyond city limits, but the city property tax rate is a joke. And this, I really think is an issue that should be addressed.
So that's something we need to send to ballot, though.
That would have to go to ballot, and that would probably be the appropriate time to go to ballot, but that would be when we ask for a stormwater district and have some sort of equitable funding then. Until, I mean, there's so many question marks on that potential storm district. Until then, we have to have some sort of income coming in so we can not only break even in stormwater, but also get some really important projects done.
Yeah. Well, and property tax, although property values go up and down depending on the economy, it's relatively stable and it's guaranteed.
Then the other part is I would like to see, and I probably got it, to be honest with you, the expenditure, how much we made, how much we did, and what did we do with the money? An accounting of that 400, I don't know what it is, of the stormwater fee, what we did with it? What did we do with that money? That's all I saw. I don't know what it is.
Currently, that generates 700,000 a year or less.
Again, Dennis, it's not how much. General, what do we do with it?
Well, I have exactly the same question. Exactly the same.
We've got that information.
I have that information in my truck.
Yeah.
It's not in front of me, so I want it, where I can read it to...
I'm sorry?
I probably got it. I just want to see it. And then we can have that discussion. Go ahead.
I just want to say that if we're bringing this ordinance to the, to council on December the 4th, that'd be first reading. I'm not sure that they're gonna be able to get that drafted, but we would need to call a special meeting on the 18th that we just canceled. I know we canceled it publicly, so then we'd have to call a special meeting to hear that second reading.
Let's leave that slot open for a special meeting, and if we have to, we can cancel it, but let's leave it. Let's go ahead and announce one for the 18th.
Then we need to call, we need a motion to call a special meeting for the 18th.
I entertain a motion to call for a special city council meeting on the 18th. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
No, I can't make the motion.
You can't make the motion. Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we hold a special session city council meeting on December 18th.
To consider water and stormwater.
To consider water and stormwater.
Issues.
What time would you like to have that at? I prefer before lunch. Anytime between dawn and lunch.
It's not gonna work.
Suggest 3:30?
3:30.
You sissies.
I don't know how many you're gonna be here, but, you know, you know what my schedule is. I can't make it before 3:00.
Okay.
3:30 worked out just fine. So we have a motion for consideration of a special city council meeting on the 18th at 3:30?
Yes.
And the only thing on that docket will be water.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Just water.
Water.
Water, sorry, water. Just water.
Just water.
Does everybody understand that motion?
Just the second reading. Yes.
Then it'll be the second reading.
For second reading.
May I finish?
That was a really terrible motion I made, sorry. And we would cancel that if it doesn't come out of first reading on...
Okay. Do I need a second? I need a second. Mr. Gill, second. Would you call real please?
Councilmember Schumacher. Aye. Councilmember Gill.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Ekstrom.
Aye.
Councilmember Meisner.
Aye.
Councilmember Weave.
Aye.
Approved by unanimous vote.
I just have something I need to ask Adam. So Thursday, stormwater meeting has been canceled, is that correct?
Postponed.
Postponed, till January. However, can we still in our Friday meeting address some of the dishwater's concerns as far as our contract for hotspot cleanup and storms?
Sure, I mean, we can discuss that after we're done discussing the drainage study, if we have time.
I think they're gonna want to have some answers sooner than later on that. I don't think that should be too hard to address.
They gave us the locations that they wanted cleaned. We've contacted our contractor to get pricing. We'll have to extend that contract at the beginning of the year. And then the only thing that remains is an IGA, well, I wouldn't call it an IGA because it's not governmental, but we'll have to have an agreement with the ditch company.
So I think they want to have more details on what that agreement is and the communication.
And I wouldn't know what that is. We'd have to get the attorneys to start drafting that if they haven't started already. I know they know about it, but I don't know if they've started working on it yet. So it may not, it may not, it may be premature to discuss with them until we have a draft of that agreement.
Well, maybe it'd be good to know where that draft, kind of the direction that it needs to go. And some of the questions they have are like the communication when storms are coming, when and how it's gonna be done, and the protocol for doing it, and the liability issues.
Do they have something drafted yet?
No, they just had a lot of questions, and probably a lot of opinions about how it should be done.
Maybe what we should do is have their, because it's in the attorney's pile now, maybe we should have their attorney chat with our attorney.
Because they know more of what needs to be done.
Have their guy call our guy, and yeah.
They know more of what needs to be done during the event.
And I think that would be good, because they also had some questions about liability issues if they have, would have liability with having company, you know, independent contractor on their ditches.
See, and I think that's, the attorneys need to hash that out. I don't, I wouldn't wanna try to do that across the table with the ditch writer. That doesn't make sense.
Okay, so if we can initiate that, I would certainly appreciate, for both that, and they have questions about Dozier, which I don't know if that'll end up... Yeah, that liability for them and things like that as well.
Right now, Dozier's not in the budget until we adopt stormwater fees. We took all the money out for capital to balance the budget.
And according to the, um, county manager, they don't have anything budgeted either.
So it's not looking like that's gonna be a project. I thought we gave them till January.
It's still possible with, uh, your proposed rate increase, you do something in January and February, but we're also looking to see what the county's doing. I mean, it's a county project that we're complementing with our funding. If they're not putting money into their own project, then we would argue that we have higher and better uses for our money within the city, and so we're waiting to see whether they step up to the plate.
And that's definitely a discussion for Friday's meeting.